All right, so I'm gonna turn this-
Oh, yeah, we're on.
Oh, we're on?
Okay, sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
Okay, we're resuming our meeting. Mr. Wall is back, so, yes. Where we left off was updated building capacity and the PowerPoint.
Correct. And I think the three, Mr. Wall, Ms. Ali Basie, and Mr. Mashur are gonna kinda team up on the next several slides as we go through different options. So I'll turn it over.
Okay. We did need, yeah.
The district put together in 2015 a spreadsheet or a document that showed what the capacities were, and that was part of a committee group approach. But as Mr. Burke mentioned, we've added 24 classrooms internally over the last two years. There's a large portion at the Heights Center, which was seven classrooms. Dearborn five and Fortson, I'm sorry, Dearborn three and Fortson five. So, we wanted to make sure that when we look at the numbers of capacity, this little spreadsheet kinda shows you just at the middle school and high school level of the additional classrooms, which modified the document we use as a reference for the actual estimated classroom maximum. So I just wanted to kinda give you that information and then you were able to look at it up to the, before this meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Abe to start the options that we discussed.
Okay, help me here. Which slide are you on? Past updated building capacity?
We were on 12. Oh, I'm on 14.
13.
That's 12.
Possible solutions.
That's Fortson's only option.
Possible solutions. Okay, so, obviously, we have the solutions that Tom had mentioned with regards to adding classrooms and so on. One of the boundary changes that we considered is moving the area from Woodworth, which, is that the first one or no?
Or no.
It's not the first one.
No, we're on.
Okay, so Stout, Stout currently going to Dearborn High would move to Etzel Ford. So Stout students, we have on, and rather than inundate you with little specific numbers that change from year to year, I just kinda determined an average so that we can get a good idea.
Abe, can Mr. Mashur, can I just mention one thing? If you look at this Title II, this only involves Dearborn High.
Right.
So what we've done is, just to kinda, so they're aware, we have, the first portion is Dearborn High only, the second portion is gonna be Fortson, and then the third portion of the presentation will be a combination of the three high schools together.
So this is only to alleviate-
Dearborn High.
Dearborn Highs.
We felt like giving the board some options as we discussed it, breaking it down into the three areas, and then coming up with, you know, a multiple level plan with all the high schools.
So we would have to reconfigure the boundary, 'cause there's, as it sits now, it wouldn't be a clean break for Stout students, but we would have, we generally have 125 Stout students per year that go to Dearborn High, 140 that go to Etzel Ford, and 20 that go to Fortson on average. So we would have 50 students per year from Stout that are currently set to go to Dearborn High. 50 students would be going to Etzel Ford or Fortson.
Per year.
Per year. I'm sorry, to Etzel Ford, per year. So it'll be 200 students over four years, so it's gonna affect the overall number there. The other option is students from Smith currently going to Dearborn High would move to Etzel. Currently, we have about 40 students per year that are, that leave Smith and go to Dearborn High. We have 145 roughly that go to Etzel Ford, so we'd have all, all students from Smith would go to Etzel Ford, which would be 185 students.
The slide, though, shows the same number. So it shows 50 a year from Smith.
No, that, yeah, 50, 50 per year, because it's anywhere, Smith is anywhere between 40 to 50 per year-
Okay.
-that, that currently go to Dearborn High.
Okay.
So instead of them going to Dearborn High, all students from Smith would go to Etzel Ford.
All right.
Abe-
Yes.
None of these, if we were to consider boundary changes, not just for Dearborn High, but probably for any of the schools, because of at the high school currently, we only do safety busing.
Correct.
Would any of these students, then, qualify for busing as well, or no?
The Smith students currently don't get busing to Dearborn High, so they wouldn't get busing to Etzel Ford. The Stout students currently get bused to Dearborn High. They would get bused to Etzel Ford, 'cause they would qualify for that safety busing for the same reason, 'cause they're crossing main streets to get to Etzel Ford.
So, talking about elementaries, the Stout kids are coming out of Maples.
Correct.
Right.
And at Smith, those are not students from River Oaks?
No, there's some from River Oaks, yes, they are.
There are, yeah.
Students from River Oaks and students from Duval.
Okay.
So the River Oaks students to, the River Oaks students to Etzel Ford-
And we're talking about that Duval split as well.
They would be getting busing. Correct.
Oh, boy. Okay. I was here for that last boundary conversation.
Yes, that's not a fun one.
Well, and if you look at these two, like, if you see he's got the options there with 14 class additions, these still do involve expansion under number four and five.
Just less.
Two, it's just less number of classes.
And we think that's the seven-classroom solution, with the boundary change, is sufficient?
It's going to balance out our numbers much better. That's on the spreadsheet. It'll be real easy for you to see on the spreadsheet that, is that, like, on a separate-
It's in the folder, yeah. You can open the, it has specifics in the study session folder, and we knew we were gonna reference it. Let's see, it's titled "Possible Capacity," and it kinda gives you a real, it takes each scenario and gives you a breakdown of the numbers.
And does it break, I, I get, I did look at that, but I don't remember. Did it break it out for the five-year?
Yes.
Okay, that's why, okay.
It's, yeah, it's all over the four-year.
Yeah.
So, it's not one year, yes.
Where we, the projection, it's not, yeah, so that we know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is an important thing to mention.
Yeah.
It's over the four years is where you'd get, not year one, year two.
Right.
And so far, just to remind you, we're only on Dearborn High. We haven't gone to Fortson yet.
Oh, that's a whole nother story.
That's a whole nother story. So anyhow, so, speaking of which, we go, we get to Fortson. Fortson, what are our options there? One is to build a ninth-grade academy, which I know was discussed before.
Build what?
Build a ninth-grade academy?
Thank you.
Okay, that's a long-term solution. Obviously, it's a lot more expensive of a price tag. You figure 800 students, we would really, we'd relieve Fortson of 800 students. So now you're right around that 2,000 mark, which is where it's much more ideal for, for our high schools to be around.
We do not have a cost estimate of that.
We don't have an official one, but we'll say this. McCullough-UNIS houses about 1,000 students. McCullough-UNIS cost us about 40 million. You figure with inflation and building and everything else you're talking about-
Way 60.
About 50 million, probably.
And that's construction and land acquisition, if you can find the land?
Tom, would that include land acquisition as well, or no?
Or ninth-grade academy?
It's based on estimate of usage, so I don't know if land, I don't necessarily think land would be in there, 'cause that's very volatile, so it's just construction cost.
Okay.
And it, and then it doesn't incorporate the cost of maintaining it going out either, 'cause of staffing and all of that would potentially change as well?
Correct, 'cause it would depend on how we actually develop and how we break out the staff. There'd be actual overhead costs, like, it'd have to be additional custodian, engineer-
And would it be considered a total high school, the ninth-grade academy?
No.
So we're not going to put in things like-
Extra curricular.
Well, yeah, you would have, you could have sports teams there.
Sports.
We have freshman teams already, so you could have the sports teams there.
So we would have to have enough property, though, to have, to have land around it for field, athletic fields and all of that.
Ideally.
And labs and all of that.
Right.
I mean, so it would have to be basically like a mini-high school-
Yeah, so what?
-in having, having all the accommodations. A pool, or no?
For, for physical education, yes.
It's a requirement, so, yeah, so, yeah, that's a lot of-
It is. It would be very similar to McCullough-UNIS.
Just building another high school.
It would be similar to McCullough-UNIS. It was expensive than a, than a regular high school.
It would need tennis courts and a football field, too.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. I mean, you could do it without some of those things, because you could, you could still use the football field at the school at Fortson, you could figure it out that way. You know, tennis courts is, you know, same thing.
You still-
You would need a gym because of the phys ed component, the physical education component, and it's, say again?
The pool.
Yeah, you'd have to, it'd be a lot like McCullough-UNIS. Be a lot like McCullough-UNIS.
And McCullough-UNIS was built, how many years ago?
2003.
2003.
Yeah.
Opened, it opened in 2004.
And that, and it cost us at that time roughly $35 to $40 million to build McCullough-UNIS, so you have to add at least 10 yard, 10 years' worth of inflationary costs that we're estimating probably around 50 million to be something similar to McCullough-UNIS.
Without the land.
Correct.
Without the land.
Okay.
It's our job to throw it upstairs. Your job to figure it out.
Thank you, yes. That's an option.
Well, and the, and the dollars you're giving to a rough estimate, based on like property without doing the study, you know.
Plus or minus 5 million.
Now, who would that school house if you didn't wanna go that way? Woodworth, Lori, and UNIS. So that would alleviate some of the busing that we have currently, and obviously, that would impact Dearborn High as well, because you're losing, they would be losing some of those, not some, but all of the UNIS students as well. Okay? Another option, shifting students that attend Fortson partial to at Fortson. That's 200 student relief. So, there are a couple of different options with this, but if you wanna get to the 200 mark, which, in my opinion, makes the most sense, not because of the number, the number's part of it, but the other part is just how you would section off that area. So, the area that's west of Greenfield, south of Ford, north of Michigan, so in between Michigan and Ford, and west of Greenfield, that whole chunk of area there, right now, those students go to Fortson.
That's a Henry Ford elementary school.
Correct. Henry Ford, Woodworth, and they go to Fortson. They, that group there, that, those, that area there would go to Etzel Ford.
So that would be new busing.
That would be one, but, one new bus, correct, for the, for the first year, and then, oh, I mean, I can tell you right now, so, our ninth grade next year would be, would affect 47 students. The following year would be again 47. The following year, so our current seventh grade would be 58 students, current sixth grade 51 students, current fifth grade 55 students. So you'd be adding one bus per year to that route.
So going back to the slide for the Fortson options, we're saying that we would be shifting 200 kids. That is assuming, again, a four-year number-
Correct.
-of about 50 per year.
50 per year.
Okay, thanks.
Give or take. Okay, now, if you wanted to make the area a little smaller and decrease the number to, say, anywhere between 35 and 45, then we would do west of Greenfield, south of Hubbard, and north of Michigan. So Hubbard would be the cutoff as opposed to Ford Road. To me, it makes more sense to just do that whole area west of Greenfield between Michigan and Ford.
Yeah, there's not a whole heck of a lot-
There isn't.
-going towards Ford Road anyhow.
Correct. Exactly. 10 to 12 kids per year, so. Okay, and then, we can do nothing.
There you go. I like that idea.
We can expand the college and CTE options. I can tell you that-
Which is voluntary.
It is, it is voluntary, but I will say this. Ms. Alcadre and her team at Fortson, the counseling staff, and she can come up here and speak if she feels like it, or if you ask her to, she'll come up, I'm sure. Anyhow, they, they have done a remarkable job in promoting some of those programs. As we know, it's not one-size-fits-all, so we do as much as we can to offer different programs to students, and sometimes, you know, students don't wanna do something that's different, because they feel like, well, what am I doing? How come I'm not doing this, or whatever, and they think it's, it's frightening or whatnot, but once they realize what the options are and what they entail, then they're more apt to, to go in that direction if they feel that it fits them better. So, that's, you know, that's one of our options as well.
And I have, you know, I've had discussions with Dr. Jensen, and we have a meeting coming up with the team, and I can tell you, you know, like, the Collegiate Academy was expanded this year to, I believe it was over 130 students from about 50 to 60 per year, 130. So we continue to expand, so those are, again, they're not, but we are moving in that direction, and I believe in Ms. Alcadre's here, that we've spoken, and I don't know if you wanted to come up and come, but I think that that's alleviated a lot of your, you know, so we're not as in dire straits at Fortson as we are at Dearborn High because of some of those programs.
If you can go to slide 19, it has some of the numbers of what the high schools are dealing with when their kids are transitioning between schools. It's impact of out-of-building programs.
And isn't, isn't a part of the problem, too, is that they're running out of school at the college for, because we took a tour for part of those programs over at the college, and I don't know space-wise, did-
That's why he's talking about maybe moving it, some of it maybe to that SME building or other options that he's gonna be discussing, so-
Okay. So we don't really have a total solution at that end either.
But the collegiate, I mean, the, we're planning to open the new early college in a year, so we definitely need space.
We need, right.
And I know that he said there is land there, too, so if you were looking to build or something, there's also land, so.
Oh, you're killing me.
So although our numbers are at 2850 possibly at this point, we have several students, and if you look at that chart, there's over 400 that are out of the building during the day. What that means is they're either out for co-op, and that's usually fifth and sixth hours. Sometimes they take first and second hour because they wanna sleep in. And then we have kids at the Mike-
At the co-op, I think.
Yeah. Michael Berry Center, we've, our, our whole drive is to have kids with purpose, not just to take random electives at Fortson, but to be in a program. The Michael Berry Center has wonderful programs for kids, so I'm, counselors are working with them to promote some of them. We want them to have purpose when they leave the high school. They want, we want them to have something to look forward to. The other thing, of course, is DCMST. We have 50 students in the morning out for that and 50 in the afternoon. Henry Ford Collegiate Academy, our goal is to increase that number. We have a lot of students who cannot afford college, and that opportunity is unbelievable. We came in this summer because the scores came in late, and we called parents to try and enlist more students, and hopefully, next year, we'll do something different where we can talk to all students before they leave in June, and those numbers should increase. The fifth year and the fourth year collegiate kids, the fourth year collegiate kids are only in our building for one hour. The rest of the time, they're at college. The fifth-year kids are not in our building. So in the end, you'll see 400, so at no point are we overcapacity, I would say, because of all the students that are, are out of the building.
Let me say this, though, with, so everyone understands, the collegiate kids, the students are still part of the total number that you see for enrollment, because there's no way for us to pull them out.
That's a fabulous job you've done, and best of all, they're getting a really high-quality education with vocational purpose. That's really terrific.
For free.
The other thing is, we're pushing the dual enrollment. We have five-year, we've created four-year plans for counselors to review with students, and, and we suggest, for example, like, becoming a parapro. Here's some classes you can take at the college in your 11th and 12th grade to get you ready to become a parapro in our district. So we're trying to give them purpose, not allowing them to take four random credits that aren't going to do anything when they leave high school.
That's the best of all, and you know what? That was, Mr. Wiston was behind a lot of that, and Dr. Shankman, some of the people who have left our district, but that's terrific that you're doing that. Dr. Mead, I know you have-
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused.
Yeah.
Are you arguing for not redistricting because you don't, because you don't need it?
Well, I, I'm, I'm arguing for the programs that Dr. Maleko and the team is advocating for, and the CTE programs, the, the teaching college, the manufacturing, the early college. To me, that's what we should be focused on, giving them programs so that they have purpose in what they're doing in high school and beyond. And I think we're on track to do it. I mean, I'm working with Dr. Masalim and, and the team for the CTEs, and we're always talking about what more can we do to provide for these students.
Well, I'm very supportive of that, but I'm just wondering-
See, there's some-
Are you arguing for not redistricting?
I, I, is that-
Answer the question, Ms. Al-
Well, I think it's, when we put it on and she met with us, it was another option, and what we're saying is, we do have the option with Fortson where we could monitor, but we would have to continue to enhance these programs.
Right.
And there is a danger in that, though. It's a bit of a risk, because, again, there are options.
Right.
It's not guaranteed that-
Oh, you can't, you can't plan.
You can't. We can't plan out.
And it's from year to year, you might not be able to, you know?
That, that's the risk, so there's a risk.
But one of the things I'm, excuse me-
But we wanna expand.
It's, it's working with the counselors and making sure, 'cause of my counseling experience, I'm really on this, making sure that they are promoting all these programs that we're offering.
And if these programs are working effectively towards getting around between the students, and the numbers applying should continue to increase.
Right. We've increased the numbers over to the Berry Center collegiate, I mean, we're working on it, and now we have seven counselors. It's going to really be helpful for the following year, you'll, you'll see an increase in enrollment, 'cause I, I give numbers to counselors, and I say, this is how many we need to promote.
I think it's important to note that, Dr. Mead, the, while these programs are, you know, Ms. Alcadre explained the programs and the benefits to having them, it may not, the programs may not be a long-term solution, but in a lot of these different options with construction, it wouldn't happen overnight. And so if we need to take, this is something that we're, that she's saying, take this into consideration as, you know, if we, if it's gonna take a year or two to alleviate some of the numbers at Fortson, it may be okay.
So postpone redistricting for two years.
No, no.
No.
Well, that would be up to you, but just know that that's something that gives us some flexibility.
Well, and this should be going, ongoing anyhow throughout our three high schools. I mean, this is something that-
Yes.
-that we're trying to get the word out. My question for you, him, is, in the interim, when, when you have these conversations with the students and/or the parents, what kind of concerns or resistance are you finding right now, since it's, it's been the most successful dual enrollment, especially at Fortson, out of all three of the high schools? We, we seem to have, I mean, I know we have a larger student population, so the numbers are gonna be higher just naturally, but still, they seem to have been having a, a larger percentage of students who have embraced the idea of leaving for half a day at the very least, so is this a hard sell still?
It's become part of the culture, to be honest with you.
Right.
To do dual enrollment, to do Michael Berry, maybe even, you know, Henry Ford Collegiate. It has become part of the Fortson culture, I would say. So the expectation is that students want to get credits so, to move on into college.
They can go to U of M Dearborn as well.
Right, right, exactly, and I do have a few that are doing that, absolutely.
We have plenty of options, so.
Right, but I want to really build the trades for those kids that maybe-
Yeah.
And Dr. Jensen talked today about some of the certification programs that he has available at the college, so we're gonna look into that and get the kids interested in those types of things, so they have something to work towards.
I would just, thank you. I would just say, too, obviously, we have Dr. Masalim who started it, and then our new leadership of Ms. Alcadre, who's continued with that in promoting it, and it is really a positive. You know, we hear about, you know, the skilled trades and the other things, other options that we might provide students, so I think it is a real positive, but at the same token, we also have to look at the philosophy. You know, years ago, we had Fortson at 23 to 2,500, and we were saying it was high. So part of that, too, is your philosophy of where do you want Fortson to be at overall with a, a large population? Do we want Fortson to be the second-largest population-wise? Now, it's, we know it's not a fire safety issue, and actually, I commend your staff. I was there during a school improvement visit where we had a, a fire alarm went off, and they had, I would say, within about seven minutes, you had that entire school evacuated. But just like Dearborn High, as they're transitioning through the halls, it is very congested during passing time, so that just is another factor to consider, is where do we ultimately, so although you're promoting it, you're not necessarily alleviating the population, so i-if that's acceptable, then, then, and I'm not saying it's a horrible thing to have 2,800, but the reality is, I think, when we looked at the data, it was approaching, it was the third-largest population in the state, and it was approaching the second largest. So that's just something to consider as well, when we know Fortson has been, I think, under Dr. Masalim's time, it was between 23, maybe 22 to 2,500, and we were saying it was high at 2,500. So now, we're seeing it level off according to Plant Moran numbers at around, they're saying 2,800. I think your numbers are similar, Mr. Mashur. So that's just another factor to consider with Fortson.
I do just worry, though, some programs invite students, I mean, we've always, we, with band, with music.
Right, yeah.
Some programs are popular because of the dyna, 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 dynamism of the teacher. So I, I worry that if we had culinary arts over at Michael Berry, we have one teacher that's been there a long time. If we lose a teacher for whatever reason and someone else goes in, does it have the same appeal to students? That's just a worry I have, that we can't depend completely on, you know, that, it's a little bit, that's, it's a little bit volatile, I think.
Yeah. I know in some cases, we're, HR is working on some, I shouldn't speak, but on emergency certifications, I mean, even for our culinary program at Fortson, our teacher, we may have to get a certification for a little bit to bring her in. There's people out there, we just, certifications, what they're doing to help us bring people in is working for these trades.
But what you are saying underneath everything is, the program has to be appealing to the students, and we have to make sure that we're on top of that, that we continue to have programs that will, will be-
And relevant to-
Relevant and appealing and attractive and all of that, yeah.
But it has no bearing on redistricting. We still have to plan on redistricting, no matter what the programs are.
We're only talking about one neighborhood. It's not like we're shifting the entire student population across the district like we did the last time.
Yeah, it's not one single silver bullet. It's a bunch, a handful of, handful of solutions, I think.
And with those numbers we were talking about with Woodworth, is all of Woodworth currently going to Fortson?
Yes, and we lose a few kids. We have, on average, 310 percentage, well, no, we lose, we have 10 at Fortson, sorry. We have roughly about 10 students a year to Atzel Ford, 295 to Fortson.
10 students out of, are they, is that boundary-wise or school?
Yeah, that's boundary-wise, 'cause they're south of Michigan Avenue.
I was gonna say, that's Miller.
Yeah, Miller, pretty much.
Oh, okay, I was thinking of Gear Park.
Miller, and Gear Park, south, yep, anyone south of Michigan Avenue, high school is Atzel Ford.
Yeah.
And here's another thing, we see the enrollment increase in ninth grade. A lot of these programs are not offered for ninth graders, correct?
Right, but they have to take in ninth grade five required classes, and usually, the sixth one is another required class, foreign language, so there's really no opportunity for programs necessarily in ninth grade.
But we're getting bodies out of the building.
No, it's, it's usually the 10th, 11th, and 12th. 10th grade is Michael Berry Center DCMST, ninth grade is DCMST, 11th and 12th, we're talking collegiate, Henry, dual enrollment-
Co-op.
-co-op and 12th.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we're still gonna see more bodies in the buildings because of the ninth-grade enrollment, assuming that-
If the ninth-grade enrollment increases further than what it's done historically?
Yes.
But part of that is, is a quirk in the system.
Right.
Because if you're, you don't pass certain number of classes, you're still, your age is 10th grade, but your classification is freshman, so I, I, I don't know all the details, but I don't know, if you fail one.
Yeah, if they fail one class, they're still classified as a 9th grade.
So, it's not really a population increase, it's a classification.
Yeah, it's, the numbers are the numbers.
Right. Just in case it was too complicated.
But some of those 9th graders are eligible still to go to the Michael Berry Center, because they've only failed one class and they might be interested in a program. We put them in the program.
But also, it's a different solution. It's a different solution if the issue is a population increase as opposed to a class failure, then that's a different solution. You have to work on getting the students not to fail that class, so.
Yeah.
All right, we need to get real back on schedule.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Wall.
Ms. Alcadre interrupted my presentation here.
We're going back to slide 15 now.
We allowed for a lot of discussion time, we're good.
And those kind of things, those are voluntary programs, so you can't necessarily, you know, all your eggs in one basket, that people are voluntary, going to go to these alternative programs. So, that's why, you know, we still have an issue that we have to account for. So, slide 15.
Next, we get to the, this is the trustee Nasser slide, so here you can pick and choose what you want. This is your surf and turf, you can pick your options, you can build, and you can redistrict.
That's probably what we're going to have to do.
So, we can build 14 classrooms at Dearborn High with options A, C, or D, and then shift students from Fortson to Etzel Ford, and that helps, will help both schools. Obviously, adding classrooms at Dearborn High is going to help that population very much and get them more situated. Shifting the 50 students from Fortson, 50 students per year from Fortson to Etzel Ford will alleviate 200 students. Option two, build 14 classrooms at Dearborn High, again, options A, C, or D, shift student, students based on feeder. This is obviously a lot more shifting, and I know we are trying to shy away from that as much as possible, just because it causes more disruption. But anyhow, you'd have Smith, Stout, Salina to Etzel Ford, Eunice and Bryant to Dearborn High, Lori and Woodworth to Fortson. That was the one we presented earlier in the school year, if you remember. Option three, there are other configurations, by the way. I mean, there's, there are as many configurations as you want. We have, you know, Smith and Stout to, Smith and Stout to Etzel Ford, I'm sorry, Stout and Salina, and Stout and Salina to Etzel Ford with Smith and Bryant to Dearborn High, and then Eunice, Lori, and Woodworth. There's, there's multiple options as far as the numbers go, it's just a matter of how much change do we want. So, next slide, building 14 classrooms at Dearborn High, expand the Carrer Heights Collegiate Academy, Early College. Option five, you're going to love this one, build a new high school. Option six, option B, build seven new classrooms at Dearborn High, shift Dearborn High students from Stout to Etzel Ford, build a 9th grade academy. Okay, and again, that would be not every single student that goes from Stout to Dearborn High, but part of that population, shift to Etzel Ford, build a 9th grade academy.
Wait, now would this 9th grade academy be for Dearborn High School or Fortson?
For Fortson. No, anytime we talk about a 9th grade academy.
Strictly for Fortson.
Correct, correct. For, well, for that area.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Construction expansion at Etzel Ford, this is a creative option, construction expansion at Etzel Ford.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's a new option.
So, you have a field house.
Mr. Casebolt kind of liked it.
That's right, that's right, as we should.
He loves his field house.
We build a field house at Etzel Ford, and then you convert the old, well, the current gymnasiums, both of them, into classrooms, and then we'd be able to accommodate Salina, Smith, and Stout, plus part of Woodworth into Etzel Ford. You would alleviate room, population wise at Dearborn High, eliminate population at Fortson, and obviously increase population at Etzel Ford, which is something that we don't want to forget in this entire equation. We don't just want to reduce populations at Dearborn and Fortson, but we also want to increase a little bit at Etzel Ford.
Can I mention too, that if you look at the spreadsheet, that gives you the numbers of how it would transition, and so all those options are aligned in that spreadsheet.
Which spreadsheet?
The one that says the possible capacity solutions, that's in the folder. It's aligned with the PowerPoint.
So, it gives us the numbers that would be taken, moved out of there with this one? Because I'm kind of trying to figure out, because you're saying 50 and 50 and 50, how many would we actually accomplish? With number seven, you're not doing, you're not doing any additions to Dearborn High?
Correct.
And I'm trying to figure out, is there enough students being out of these other schools that are currently attending there that would be a solution for Dearborn High's teachers on a cart kind of thing?
Yeah, we already have teachers, we already have teachers on a cart, but like I said, you can add, you can, yeah.
So, we could add, we could add four classrooms and then to number seven.
Exactly, so you'd be building at Dearborn High and Etzel Ford.
So, what's the cost then of number seven? Or, does anybody dare to throw out a number with that?
We haven't really costed that one out, because there was the one that came later. I don't want to throw a number out there, because I might misquote it later, saying the wrong number.
It's a gym.
So, the gym, all the students would have to be walked over to the field house, basically. We're using it as a gym, correct?
The idea was, the concept would be in that parking lot behind the existing gym, where they have that staff parking lot.
Okay, so we would add it on to, where would we put the pool in with the new, we'd have to build a new pool and cement over the old one to make?
That pool is pretty old to begin with, so we would look at by building a new pool.
Building a new pool too?
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out cost wise where we.
Yeah, absolutely, no, be a field house would be a, complete field house, weight room, everything, and then we'd convert the space inside to classrooms and.
Do we know how many classrooms we'd get?
We estimated about 20.
12?
20.
Oh, 20? I was going to say 12.
And do we know what field houses are running in other districts?
What do you mean, like how much are they running, like the cost wise?
Cost.
Oh, no, 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 we don't know.
We reached out to Woodhaven, they recently are building their pool and field house right now. It was estimated about $30 million, but again, we had a.
Same as the 9th grade academy.
Well, definitely costs more than the additions Joanne put on her house, if that's what you're asking.
Either way, we're looking at.
A lot of money, millions.
All right. Just making sure she's awake. All right, other factors impacting capacity, enrollment at the Heights campus, the Collegiate Academy dual enrollment, Early College with, which Principal Alcadre touched on some of those. Building needs at Henry Ford College to house existing and expanding early college programs. Dr. Maliko spoke about that as well. I know him and Dr. Jensen have been in constant communication with that regard, in that regard. We also want to continue expanding our preschool programs as well, so.
Can I comment on that? I just wanted to mention that if, and again, I know we're still in discussion, but if we were ever to do expansion, just like we did the last time, and again, I'm not saying we are, you know, as far as with a bond or anything, but I think it would be worthwhile to look at that as well, because as we want to expand preschool, that's where we don't, we have space issues now. We're fine at the elementary level, but if we want to expand more early childhood, we don't really have room for expansion, so we'd have to look at that. So, I'm just putting it on the table so that it's something that's in the, you know, the thought process.
Well, that's very important, because understand that if, the best way in colleges, as you know, Dr. Mead, are doing this throughout the country, and especially in the state of Michigan, community colleges, they're doing a lot of things where they're bringing kids on campus, because the best way to, you know, to improve their, increase their enrollment through the years is to get people acclimated with their campus. So, if we have preschool programs, that's going to increase our, our enrollment here as well. The more people you have coming here, that they're happy with the preschool program, they're going to usually stay. So, we would be losing less kids to private schools and charter schools and so on. Okay, Henry Ford Early College Enrollment, that's what we look at, we look like right now between the Early College and Advanced Manufacturing, which are two programs. The Early College is pretty much going to say, stay at that level for, for a while. I don't see a big increase in that. The Manufacturing, that one is a little bit more flexible, because that's our program entirely. The, you know, the early, the regular Early College Program is, you know, that's a partnership, so we have our limitations as to what we can do there. Impact of out of building that slide Ms. Alcadre went over, Dearborn High, Etzel Ford, there's, there's always going to be that little spot in the day though, between like, is it like third and fourth hour, or second and third hour, where, where yes, where the building pretty much has the majority of their student population is in school at that time. So, you know, as, as people are transitioning in and transitioning out, you know, to go to their other programs. So, there's always going to be that, that high point during the day where the volume What do we need board authorization for? Direction at Dearborn High. Oh, sorry, Tom.
No, you're doing good, Dave.
Tom loves this part. Tom, come on.
So, this is the same slide as you saw before, and this is where the discussion of where the board will then take over. Again, it can be very interactive, you know, you can ask questions of us, you know, share your comments and concerns. We do have a couple of slides after this, just talking about local elections where they have been in the past, if you consider a bond issue. I don't know if you want David to kind of go over that first before you go, but there's some information about recent bond elections.
Why don't we do that, David? Why don't you go over that, and that way we can go back to the direction that Mr. Wall is requesting.
So, we took a look at some of the bond proposals that are going on currently. If you look around the state right now, in 2017, you can see that, you know, 16 have failed, 20 have passed, and 30 are pending. So, they're, you know, those are bond elections that are going to take place in the November election, and the price, you can see the cost, you know, as little as 1.6 million, all the way up to 93 million in East Lansing. If you look a little bit closer, just around us here in our area, the counties surrounding us, you can see that there are several bond proposals that, that are going to be on the ballot in November. The one in Dexter was actually a May, May ballot proposal, and that was for $71 million, which passed. And, you know, that's a pretty small community. Looking around, just backing up historically, again, looking around the state, you can see that the trend has been favorable for the passage of bond proposals around the state. And then again, looking closer just around us, the counties surrounding us, you can see that, again, favorable into passing the bond proposals, and the dollar amounts are quite varied. And just once again, backing up one more year to 2015, you can see pretty much the same trends. When you see like, if you look at McComb, if you look at that one that had two failed and one passed, but there was only two districts, that's because one of the districts, it failed, they put it back on the ballot, and then it passed again. So, even when districts were unsuccessful in passing bond proposals, when they went back to the voters, sometimes they pared it down, sometimes they just did a better job of explaining, then they were able to get those bond proposals passed. Then finally, just taking a bigger, broader historical look over the past 18 years, just here in Wayne County, you can see that over that time period, 95 school bond proposals on the ballot, 50 of them passed, 44, or 44 passed, 50 failed. The largest one that has passed in that timeframe was right here in Dearborn in 2002, $150 million. And I don't know if Taylor then got inspired by our passage in 2002 and decided to throw $197 million proposal on, on the ballot in 2003. Obviously, that, maybe it was the dollar amount, maybe it was the fact that we were at the start of a downturn in the economy, whatever the fact, whatever the reasons are, that proposal did fail. I just threw in that small one, I just thought it was interesting to put in perspective. You know, small districts have to go to their voters for as little as $800,000. We're talking tonight about some proposals that are in the millions of dollars and, and possibly us being able to do that on our own. So, I think that really puts us at a, in an advantageous position to be able to have the resources because of our size to go out and do some of those kinds of things. If all of this information was right on the state website, which I included there, so if you wanted to go back and really look at the data, compare it all, you can. Now, these are all bonded, or bond proposals that were approved by the state, so a district could go and put a bond proposal on the ballot that is not a proposal, a bond proposal, like a millage proposal, or, or something along those lines. So, it doesn't include that. This data only includes the bond proposals for school districts who are putting on proposals to, for, for physical costs, not operational costs, like when we did the whole harmless millage renewal.
The Wayne Raisa that just passed last year.
Right, right. So, these were very specific. So, that was just a little history.
Could I add to that too? Last year, you know, at our meetings, the last couple of years, they had tried to ask districts, because of the Wayne County Millage, not to have a lot going in the county. So, obviously that passed, and that was recent, and that was favorable, and it's, and some of the potential money that could be used for Dearborn High is in the budget from Mr. Wall from that, and Hansford Millage. Thank you, Mr. Muston.
Just to get back to your question about the field house, I just looked it up, it's about 9.6 to 12.3 million, Waterford looked to build a field house. That was on the low end, 9.6 million on the high end, 12.3. And to give you an idea, it would have, the higher end would have more lanes for running, it would have a track on the top, have more lanes for running, and it would seat 3,000 people in their, in their gym, so.
And what, what year was that?
2016.
Okay, so it was pretty recent.
Yes.
The pool would be the most expensive one.
And, yeah, this has a pool as well, just so you know. Pool, track, gym, everything, fitness center.
I'd like to know who their contractor was.
I hope it's not the same guy that Tom's talking to, 30 million, oh my God, I about had a heart attack over here.
Okay.
So, going back to slide 20, obviously, we, this is a broad area of potential options. We're really looking for the board to kind of narrow it down for us to kind of understand where their comfort level is. Administration would then, you know, work on it and fine or tune it as we go along. But obviously, the direction at Dearborn High, if the expansion is an option that you want us to start moving forward on, as Mr. Burke alluded to, this is going to take time, and the sooner we start, the sooner obviously it would get finished. The second one is on district boundaries. You know, when we look at this option, or what we have to deal with the table, we have to look at a short-term option and a long-term option, because, you know, we can't do that much in a short-term option. Even any boundary change wouldn't take effect until the next school year. Third is just if there's a different, more information, wanted on a 9th grade academy, if that was an option, because we really have not, you know, really gone deep into that level, what it would cost, what it would look like, the land acquisition cost is something we would have to consider. And then also, number four was the study of a new high school. We've had some discussion in the past about what's the appropriate size for a high school? Is it 2,000, or are we comfortable with different level high schools in Dearborn? And then five, just to let you know, we did talk about some of the financial options at the Finance Committee, but again, you know, the finances isn't driving the issue, it's really what's best for kids is what should drive the issue, and then we'll kind of address the financial options, because there are some that we can look at.
The new high school too, obviously would come with quite a bit of boundary changes too, so just, you know, be aware that that would.
I was on the task force when, after we passed the 150,000, I mean, million, bond. And then I went on, I was on that bond, and then I was on the high school task force where we discussed, and we obviously didn't move in that direction, because there were so many challenges with it then, that we explored at that point in time, and, and it ended up being a non-starter for us. So, I do have some, at least some history to share with, with those conversations that we had back then, and nothing has changed to improve some of the problems that we had experienced in that conversation then.
So, you're kind of throwing out something that maybe we could have a discuss, well, we, we need to go to public comment, but that is an idea to, maybe the way we should approach it, unless anybody's got other suggestions, we could start talking about which ones we favor. We'll put it on for our September meeting for discussion, but we need to start eliminating some of these options.
And, and making sure that they understand what direction to start focusing on.
Right, exactly, so that we can start narrowing down our focus, so.
Yeah, I'd say we, that's what I was going to say, is we should start by eliminating.
The things that we really think, but are you planning on having that conversation now?
We can have some of that now, is there, yeah, now, normally we were going to go to public comment.
Well, let's hear from the public first.
Does anyone want to speak on the topic?
I have no blue cards.
No blue cards, all right. So, in that case, we're right on time. So, let's open the floor for discussion.
What I usually like to do is look at options that we really don't like, and start knocking things off, and then focus more on what we do like, is, is that an all right idea?
Let me back up just a second. We have the high school principals here, why don't we ask them to come up, and if they have any other further thoughts on.
Or recommendations.
Or recommendations, just other things we have, or.
Maybe your wish list?
Yeah.
And they're in the buildings every day.
Yeah, 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 so, you know, what things are going to work, and what, what things will work if we force it to work? Mr. Martin, you're not running up to the front.
Did before.
Yeah.
We can all sit in the same chair?
Yeah. Dr. Maliko, if you want to lead the conversation, I don't know.
So, I think one of the things I know, and we can maybe just start with the Etzel too, is that we're going to really look at, we have to have Mason go in there and kind of study exactly what the program looks like. I know that was a concern that you had, Mr. Casebolt, just to make sure. But what we determine is we kind of want, so the people that are going to go into the schools will work with the principal, and they won't be, you know, from that school or be part of that feeder track, just to kind of look at, you know, those issues, because it does have an instructional, although you might have capacity, when you look at your numbers, what is the instructional impact? So, we, we.
Trustee Thorpe has got a curious look.
What are you referring to? If we change the district boundaries and increase the population at Etzel, or are you talking about the field house, or?
Actually, it could be both, you know, the impact on both. So, for example, boundary changes, we kind of went at a number of 200 is what we were kind of looking at. When we looked at the numbers from the document that came, that Brian Wiston at the time had worked with the board, and there were some board committee members, it looked like it's about 300, you know, is what we have room for, but in talking to Mr. Casebolt, you know, we want to make sure we have a really good idea. Yeah, so that, that won't necessarily impact the direction of potential construction at Dearborn High, if we decide to move in that direction, but it would give us some more solid numbers and more data, as we brought in Plant Moran today, we brought in Middle Cities, we have Stanford, we have four different studies. So, it would give us another way to have more data, so that we make a real good informed decision as we look at boundaries. Mr. Mashore has been working hard on those specific numbers, and again, there's a lot of different options. I think the Etzel Ford option came up, just because we know there's land available, but again, that was something new, and I could just tell you, the team has worked very hard over the summer, we've had multiple meetings throughout the summer, we've brought multiple large group meetings, small group, you know, conference calls. So, we've been putting a lot of time and effort into this, because we know these are important decisions that are not only going to affect the short term, but the long term. So, I appreciate the high school principals being involved, and so I'd be open to them kind of sharing. being involved, and so I'd be open to them kinda sharing. I don't know, Mr. Casebolt, any concerns or anything that you may have, or...
I think the one that I just shared, there's the studies, and then there's the overall feel of the building on a daily basis, and you see the numbers and you see capacity. But I brought up in, in the meetings that we had, that we need to have people come out and take a look, like in bi hourly basis. We have specialized programs there, and if you look at the shell of a building and you plug it into a formula, that doesn't necessarily account for a program that may take up two classrooms. You know, if you split a wall down the middle, there may be seven or eight kids in that classroom. You just don't know. So you have to look at all those factors, I think, as well, and that's more data to make a more informed decision. So I think, I'm excited about that, that people will be coming out to do that and get the feel of the building.
Because if you have a special ed classrooms, and we looked at that, too, well, your class size, you may only have, if it's a center-based, you might have, you know, a handful of students in there. But then your capacity is thirty, you're going by your numbers of thirty. So it really isn't when you look at that.
Right, use, yeah, use.
The other option that we do have, and, and again, this would be more of a long-term, is over at the Berry Center Heights Campus. There is land there. So whether it was expansion of special ed programs, or otherwise, there, there is the availability, you know, maybe career and technical, we do have space, and I know Mr. Burick has said we, we do have that ability. But again, that would be a cost. But I just wanted to say, you know, we're keeping all options on the table. I know we wanna narrow it, but long-term, I, I do think it's responsible, just like I threw the preschool, I just thought we have that in our mindset, that if we wanna do something to really help our students. And I could tell you, like for the preschool, you know, we have multiple people that contact us that want into that program, and we don't have space. We don't, the funding and space, it's a combination of both. And, and so, right now, the state isn't fully funding, you know, universal preschool, but if it ever were to, or funding ever were to increase, then we'd have to take that into consideration.
And these aren't people looking for the paid preschool option. They're looking for...
GSRP type of program.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they're looking for the GSRP program.
Question on that, Dr. Maliko, is that, we just sold a piece of property that could have filled, or fit a couple hundred students over at Howe. The problem is that we don't have the match all the time between buildings and students, so would, how are we set for demand for preschool? I mean, do we have our facilities, our high schools are scattered, our middle schools are elementary. What about, do we have capacity, or do we have buildings?
Right now, and Dr. Chokel has done a nice job of finding rooms in the different schools, so the only places we could expand were like, in, in the local schools. Like I know we added a class to Long, we've got Long, Whitmore, a few others. Now, here's the other issue, is that we have the Cotter preschool that was near Miller. Well, if you've seen the Miller numbers, they're jumping up to about six hundred and seventy students. So what's happened is, we used to have Cotter preschool in the Miller, well, we don't no longer have room for them, because of just the general population at Miller. So it does create a domino effect, and I think that's what Mr. Casebolt's referring to when you consider special ed. It's the same thing. So at, at some point, you know, I do think that, you know, obviously, we brought this forward to you, because I think the responsible thing is to do something to, moving forward. Now, what exactly that option is, we given, as Abe said, a smorgasbord of, a buffet of different options and trying to be creative. And then ultimately, you heard Mr. Wall, he's our financial guy, but he says, you know, what is best for students? So that's why I also wanted the discussion of, do we like, you know, even though we can expand the Berry Career Center, do we still want twenty-eight hundred students in, at Fortson as we expand it? So those are all, I think, important questions long-term for, you know, the educational interests of our students. And, and again, there's cost, though, too. So you are weighing cost, even though I know we're looking at the best interests of students.
But we have to be realistic, because we, we have to be able to finance all of this. And, you know, no matter how righteous we might be in what's best for students, if, if we don't have a way to pay for it, it doesn't really matter.
And we can't pass them.
You know, and we can't, and if you go out and have to, if nothing else, do a couple of bonds, you know, have, have to go back and go back to the voters. We had that problem with the one, with the hundred and fifty million, you know, you could potentially do that. That kicks the solution down the road as well, even if you eventually get there. If we can't do anything during our peak...
I'd like to start from Trustee Thorpe's point and Dr. Mead, but let's, before we, before we talk, let's finish with the, the principals and see what other things that...
Before, help me, I'm an old man, okay? Now, help me, we got all these people here who are a great source to help us make decisions. Can we break it down into what might be four topics? Then we ask each principal what they think about the topping, instead of just talking generally?
So what, you wanna ask them, what do they think about additions, versus what do you think about re-drawing the boundaries versus, okay?
Hubble first, very excited about the addition. No, seriously, you know, the increased enrollment and the impact it would have on our activities and programs are really exciting for us, yeah.
I would, I would support really any, any decision made, to be very honest with you. But I, but coming from the elementary, middle school, and I actually converted three lounges and two pre-k's, working with Dr. Chokel, we ended up with five pre-k. I really have to support what Dr. Maliko's saying about the need for the pre-k classrooms. But I would support anything you guys decided, yeah.
All I know is Dearborn High's packed right now.
Dearborn High's what?
Dearborn High is packed right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, starting Tuesday, yeah. We have a lot of students. We're making do, really we are, but I would just implore you guys to filter through all of the decisions and choose one quick, because it, it, it helps, it helps parents, it helps students, it helps teachers know that there's a solution down the road.
I agree.
But i-if you're asking me, I really don't have a preference out of all of them. I think they're all good options. It's really gonna be, some of them are less political, from your guys' perspective, than some others. But I'll go back to what Tim G said at the original meeting, Abe. We have more kids sitting in high schools than we have seats, regardless of how you put them around. So I don't know how you're gonna get around it without building somewhere. And, and that's just, that's just the truth of it. But, but you want it partially done. You want, you want relief now. You don't want the whole thing built at once. You want, what relief do you need now? In an ideal world? Yeah. So if I had all of my students, we're, we probably need anywhere between what the projection was, eight to fourteen classrooms. Okay. We already, we, we've, we've pretty much maxed out all the space that we can, in terms of space that was sitting, that wasn't super utilized. At, at this point, I, I don't know what our other options are, but I would say Dearborn High, in comparison to Etzel, is a little bit more landlocked, just based on the neighborhood that's around us. So adding on is a little bit more tricky.
But quite frankly, he, whatever solution we do for Dearborn High, the relief isn't coming this year, no matter what.
Yep.
Right. There's nothing immediate.
There's nothing that's going to take care of this year. So it's got, but, but a promise for next year, the solution will be gone.
Or even, or even beyond, but I would say, I'm a little wary.
But you want, you want to know that there's some decision moving forward, yes.
It's always easier to deal with difficult times, when you know that relief is on the way, right?
I, I just wanna add that my ultimate goal would, for the students, would be that we expand CTE programs at the Michael Berry Center.
Expand what?
CTE programs at the Michael Berry Center.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
And with that being said, I obviously don't have a preference either, but I think this situation has, not to say forced, but increased our enrollment with our programs. We, we feel we have exemplary programs at Michael Berry. You know, we don't just offer programs willy-nilly. You know, we have to do surveying of our students once they enter, and especially once they graduate. A lot of the programs, we tie to, you know, what is relevant and where the, where the jobs are actually going. So, you know, I'm, I'm seeing numbers, and I'm very excited about this school year that I've never seen at Michael Berry, period. I think some of it, with the STEM program being there, you know, is forcing a collaboration between STEM and DCMSD that's really gonna benefit both programs. So I think there's more growth down the road for that. And, you know, whatever decisions you guys make, I think is gonna be a boon and a benefit for our district as a whole.
Since we've shuffled around some programs in and out of Michael Berry Center, what are we like capacity-wise?
Well, we're full. And, you know, that's the first time I've really seen the numbers, you know, be this high, this school year. Obviously, there's some room for growth, you know, in the programs, but we don't really have enough classrooms, really, to accommodate, you know, what we currently have, so...
But we have no proposal for expanding Dearborn Heights, do we?
We haven't had, but that's another...
That's part of what we're talking about with a bond?
No, not at this point.
Not money-wise.
It's not a topic of discussion right now.
But, but there is potential there, because of the property that's...
Like Dr. Maliko said, there is room.
Well, it's nice to hear that. I just didn't realize you were already full.
And that's why we moved the special ed back here and moved Human Resources to the lobby to maximize space, so we built another four classrooms.
The Business Academy was brought over to the Michael Berry this year, and that's why we're full, so we've got more students going over there for that reason.
Yeah, you have a lot of students in the Business Academy.
And we had looked at that before, you know, actually moving the Business Academy, you know, from Dearborn High. Couldn't really get support for that now. We think that's, this is an ideal time to really try and expand, bringing that over as well.
Can you, can you handle it?
We think so.
Without additions?
Right now, yes.
We have several students who are enrolled in it now.